Then let's go ahead and we will open this meeting for January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one for the Mason County Commission. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Trask, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance today?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Shutey.
Here.
And Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. We begin with this. The association, the counties have gotten together and has set something up to take a moment of silence for those that have fallen due to the COVID. We were not prepared for any of that, but I would still like to take one moment of silence, if you don't mind, to to reflect on what's happened in this year. Any objection, commissioners? Hearing none, please. One moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Item number four, correspondence and organizational business, four point one correspondence. Do you have correspondence to come before us today?
We do. Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Change of location for Royal Cannabis Production and Processing; Change of Corporate Officers' Application for Green State Indoor Incorporated; Liquor License for the Selah Inn has been discontinued; Marijuana License for Good Job Farms LLC; And liquor and marijuana licenses due to expire. The Federal Energy Regulatory Committee sent in a letter regarding Twelfth Independent Consultant Safety Inspection Report for the Cushman Hydroelectric Project.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence or organizational business to come before us, Mackenzie? Thank you very much. Next, we'll move over to item number five, which is our open forum for citizens' input. At this time, we will give you the opportunity to speak on issues that are not on the agenda. If they are on the agenda, we ask that you hold off and wait until it comes up. You'll be given your opportunity to speak at that time. With that being said, what I will ask is that you will unmute yourself. Please announce your name, and I will call on you individually after the names are announced. With that being said, is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to the commission on any issue not on the agenda?
Commissioner Netherland, we have one hand raised. It would be Ken.
I see his. Is there anybody else also? Hearing none. Mr. Van Busker, would you please let us know your name and where you're from, please?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you. Ken Van Busker. Live on the Davis Farm Road here in Belfer. And I was an original member of the Subarea Planning Group. And I've been working for close to twenty years now to get the critical equip for recharge area in hydrology area layer in the Belfer UGA, correct? Volunteering all my time and efforts. Last week, I had a productive meeting with Ms. Rowan and the EIS and the Subarea Planning Consultants. I'm not sure if the meeting was recorded. However, the consultants documented all my observations and concerns. And just like with them, I'd like to extend my offer to you folks to ground truth some of those critical areas with you, if you'd like, and we can maintain social distancing and do it safely. Many, if not all of, many but not all of the hydrology concerns I have are on the old Belfer Highway and in the vicinity of the fire station. The Fire Department didn't document several of these in their SEPA application for the pending campus concept. And it's in an area, in my opinion, that shouldn't even be in the UGA. I don't know if you saw last week's article in the Journal about the Fire Authority's fifty-year facility and the county's involvement, but I'd encourage you to check it out. I'm not aware that the county entered into any kind of a binding agreement, but the article left the reader with that impression. Please recall that I asked you folks a couple of years ago before this measure came on the ballot to do a feasibility study of your own before entering into any agreements. I feel it's very important that any development of this size and magnitude be vetted through through the Subarea Planning Public Process rather than the special use permit scheduled for next week before the hearings examiner. And to that end, I respectfully ask that the the board strengthen the public outreach for the draft subarea plan update through increased media attention or mailings to the public. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ken. Before I move forward, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please unmute yourself and announce your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will move forward to item number six, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. Is there any comment? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Next up, item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of January fourth, two thousand twenty-one briefing minutes and January fifth, two thousand twenty-one's regular meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one briefing minutes and the January fifth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes as presented. Any additions, subtractions, or withdrawals? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, then. Item carries. Next up is the approval of the action agenda. At this time, we will read everything that's on the list, and they will be passed with one motion unless the community decides to take it off and have it be held as a separate vote. With that being said, you'll also be given an opportunity before we vote to ask a question that may help you to decide whether or not you want to take it off for a separate vote. With that being said, I will read item number eight point one through eight point four. Commissioner Shutey, would you please read eight point five through eight point nine? And Commissioner Trask, would you read eight point one zero through eight point one four? Item number eight point one, approval to appoint Cynthia Brymyer to the Mason Transit Authority Board to fill a vacated elected official term that ends December two thousand twenty-three. Item number eight point two, approval to amend resolution number twenty-seven dash zero seven, deletion of the Budgetary Accounting Fund, one one six zero 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 dash zero 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 Historical Preservation Fund. Item number eight point three, approval to amend resolution one dash nine six to reflect updated policy and procedures based on the federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, FMCSA, and the United States Department of Transportation, DOT, to ensure all Mason County drivers operate commercial vehicle drug and alcohol free. Item number eight point four, approval of the two thousand twenty-one memorandum of agreement, Appendix A, which provides funding for the Washington State University WSU Extension to provide programs in Mason County based upon the two thousand twenty-one budget.
Item eight point five, approval to amend resolution number two thousand twenty dash one zero nine for proceeds of sale of surplus property, equally splitting the proceeds of the sale parcels number three two zero three zero dash five one dash zero seven zero one zero and three two zero three zero dash five one dash one zero 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 one at twenty-one sixty-nine and twenty-one seventy-nine Lake Boulevard and Shelton between current expense and public works. Item eight point six, approval of warrants and treasurer electronic remittances. Claims clearing fund warrant number eight zero seven six seven eight two through eight zero seven seven one zero nine in the amount of four million seven hundred sixty-one thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Direct deposit fund warrant number seven four two six one through seven four six four zero in the amount of seven hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Salary clearing fund warrant numbers seven zero zero five six five seven through seven zero zero five six nine three, the amount of one million forty-one thousand two hundred eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. And treasurer electronic remittances in the amount of six million five hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Item eight point seven, approval to accept the CARES Act funding reimbursement grant from the State Office of Public Defense for Supplies. Item eight point eight, approval for the chair to review and sign the two thousand twenty-one contract with Tashner Law Office to procure services from Tashner Law to serve as a contracted public defense attorney for Mason County District Court. Item eight point nine, approval to hire one temporary full-time employee in public health to assist with the COVID nineteen vaccine rollout.
Item eight point ten, approval of the resolution to cancel uncollected personal property taxes as listed and attested to by the treasurer. Item eight point eleven, approval to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's annual refund report. Item eight point twelve, approval for the commissioners to sign the updated inter-local agreements with the seven Mason County school districts: Shelton, North Mason, Grapeview, Southside Pioneer, Maryam Night, and Hood Canal concerning the use of facilities during public health disasters and emergencies. Item eight point thirteen, approval to sign the resolution authorizing the county to purchase forty-five grinder pumps and conversion kits as a sole source purchase for ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars for current equipment. I'm sorry, from correct equipment. Item eight point one four, approval for the Board of County Commissioners to sign the letter to the governor regarding adjusting the guidelines for school district funding formulas that were implemented prior to COVID nineteen.
Thank you, commissioners. With that being said, now will be your opportunity, if you have any questions, that would help you to decide whether or not a specific item should be taken off for a vote. If you have a question, I would ask that you unmute yourself now and let me know your name, and I will call on you. Commissioners, any questions from you? Okay, then I will ask right now, commissioners, do you have any items first that you would like taken off for a separate vote? I would like eight point nine taken off for a separate vote. In the public, is there any item that the public would like taken off for a separate vote? If so, unmute and make your name known. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of items eight point one through eight point one four, with the exception of item eight point nine, which is removed for a separate discussion and vote as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the action agenda as presented with the removal of item number eight point nine. With that being said, are there any comments from the commission? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight point nine. There's no need for the staff to read. I just want to bring it up for the commission, give them the opportunity after what we were hearing this morning. Is there any possibility that we would like to change the approval hire from one temporary full-time employee for public health to assist with the COVID nineteen vaccine rollout, or would we consider the two that was requested? We had talked as a commission that if something came up that we would consider that, so I just wanted to give us an opportunity. If not, I'm comfortable with what we have. I just wanted to have that opportunity.
Commissioner, could you maybe share a little bit of what you're what you're what you heard this morning that might?
Yeah, the idea for the rollout and the need for staffing and the need for perhaps having people that are available to receive the calls and put them back out again. Sounds like they may be overwhelmed, and it may just be a temporary daily thing. I just wanted to give us the opportunity if we decided that now's the time, instead of waiting for Dave to come back, that's all.
I would like to stay with what we have right now and give them the opportunity to come before us again and ask for another person. Also, I want to make sure that we have the funding available, so that would be another another issue holding me back as far as changing from what we have right now.
Yeah, you know, initially I was supportive of the two being concerned about, you know, sort of who would manage the logistics and how this would be implemented and all the concerns that are sort of coming to light you know, over the past few days. That said, I haven't really seen us come up with a clear plan yet as to how this would be implemented and how you know, what that would potentially provide in terms of relief or additional coordination. So I think at this point, I'm inclined to go with the one and then just really, really encourage our public health staff to take the bull by the horns on this and put together a plan for clinics to do vaccination, to work on the logistics. And you know, and if we're seeing this in a week or two, that's still an issue. I think the problem might be bigger than just adding one body.
I would agree. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item eight point nine to hire one temporary full-time employee in public health to assist with the COVID nineteen vaccine rollout.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval to hire one temporary full-time employee in public health to assist with the COVID nineteen vaccine rollout. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is item number nine, other business department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak at this time? Please unmute yourself and let your name be known, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will move forward to item number ten, which is our public hearing. Let's see. For item number ten, ten point one, we'll open the hearing right now for a public hearing continued from January fifth, two thousand twenty-one to approve the proposed amendments to Title fourteen, consistent with the two thousand eighteen Building Codes as directed by the Washington State Building Code Council and by RCW nineteen point two seven to become effective immediately as a voluntary basis and mandatory effective July first, two thousand twenty-one. Staff Kel Rowan and Josh Luck.
Good morning, commissioners. Kel Rowan from Mason County Community Development. Yeah, this was a continued hearing from January fifth. And the governor or the legislature did delay the mandatory code until July first, as you said, but we are going to allow folks who already want to submit plans effective immediately, so to the two thousand eighteen code. And then, of course, July first will be mandatory, so it gives people a little more time. And yeah, just wondering if you have any questions for us.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, Kel. So allowing applicants to voluntarily apply to the to apply using the two thousand eighteen code. They could also apply up until the date that this becomes fully effective using the fifteen code, is that correct?
Correct.
They'll have the option, and staff understands that and is prepared for that, which is, I think, a helpful bit of flexibility. So the one caveat, commissioners, is, as Kel mentioned, state building code council did extend this again to July first as an emergency rule. That's currently with Governor Inslee, who has seven days from the time he accepts the emergent or receives notice of the emergency rule to which he could either overturn it or sustain it. It's my understanding that he received official notice of the rule on Thursday of last week. So we will know one way or another here in a few days as to whether or not he's going to uphold the change that the building code council met. But either way, I think, you know, it's going to be in effect giving people, because of that, giving people flexibility is helpful. So just wanted to add that point of clarification.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff? Then I'd like to take a moment and give the public an opportunity. Is there anybody in the public who has a question for staff regarding the presentation that was given? If you want to testify, you'll be given an opportunity afterwards. Right now, this is just for questions. If so, please unmute yourself, and I will let me know, and I will call on you. Hearing none, I will close this aspect and move into public testimony. Is there any public who would like to testify on this proposal? Any public who would like to testify on this proposal? Hearing none, I will close public testimony and move into commissioner deliberation and/or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the proposed amendments to Title fourteen, consistent with the two thousand eighteen Building Codes as directed by the Washington State Building Code Council and RCW nineteen point twenty-seven to become effective immediately on a voluntary basis and mandatory effective no later than July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the approval of the proposed amendments to Title fourteen, consistent with the two thousand eighteen Building Codes as directed by Washington State Building Code Council and RCW nineteen dot two seven to become effective immediately on a voluntary basis and mandatorily effective on July first, two thousand twenty-one. Are there any comments from the commission?
Just a quick thanks again to staff. I appreciate the flexibility. This has been a long time coming. And just appreciate the effort on it and being willing to be flexible as the policymakers wrangled with when to implement this. So much appreciated.
Any other comments?
I'd like to second what Commissioner Shutey said. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I know there's been a lot of there's you've gained some bodies, and so training and working with them, truly appreciate you guys.
And I'll add the same thing. I want to say, way to think on your feet, Kel and staff, you guys did a wonderful job in the changes that you made. Made it a lot more accessible and easy for our possible developers. And I do not want to go on without giving a special thank you to Commissioner Shutey for all your work on bringing this forward and for working with the state building code. Your work has paid off, and you definitely are helped this county with what we're facing because of your work. So thank you for your service on that. With that, any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it. That this hearing is closed, and we will move on to item number eleven, which is your board reports and calendars. Commissioner Shutey, would you like to begin? The Commissioner Trask after that, and then myself, and we'll turn to your man.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After today's commission meeting, I have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, again, talking about updates on this Comish Valley projects. Also have a special meeting of the MaceCom Board Governance Board, as well as our Mason Transit Meeting this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the folks from Hama Hama Oysters later this week, having a meeting with the Sheriff's Office and Public Health to discuss a navigator program for behavioral health. Also have a meeting, commissioners, I'll be sure to fill you in next week on how this goes, but have a meeting with the Executive Director of Timberland Regional Library, Cheryl Haywood this week, as well as a Thurston Mason BH ASO Governance Board Meeting. Back next week for briefings, as well as our WASAC meetings. Also looks like I'm holding a date here for potential RIAF fourteen follow-up meeting would be a doubleheader this month as we kind of round the corner there. Also have a Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board Meeting and a follow-up on some treatment sales tax funding as well as a bi-monthly check-in with staff from the BH ASO ahead of our February second commission meeting.
Great. So let's see. So we have the commission meeting this morning. Yesterday, we had our WASAC virtual assembly, and it was regarding the, it was with the Board of Health regarding vaccines, and it was a very informational meeting. Somewhat aggravating, but still very informational. And then also, we had the announcement from the governor or the press conference from the governor again. And today, I'll be meeting with Kel after this meeting. And sorry. WASAC and WSLPO meeting this afternoon, along with our Mason Transit Board Meeting, our EOC Meetings. We have legislative, legislative, our lodging tax meeting tomorrow. Courthouse Security Meeting along with CARES Funding Meeting and DNR Litigation. Another LSC Meeting on Friday. It's session, so I'll be doing a lot of LSC Meetings. And then Monday, we have our county briefing, virtual assembly. We have a broadband discussion on Tuesday, Board of Health Meeting on the twenty-sixth. Area Agency on Aging Meeting, Community Action Meeting. Actually, two meetings with the Area Agency on Aging, another LSEC Meeting. I'll be doing a, have a presentation for the Rowan Conference next weekend. And then we're back here on Monday, the first for repeat pretty much of previous weeks.
We just do it all over again. So Toastmasters had invited me to come and listen and watch what they were doing. I tell you what, our elected officials have nothing on those folks. I enjoyed watching the technique and everything they use. It's actually pretty fun and impressive to realize there's so much that goes into a presentation like that for everything from cadence to silence to even how you phrase your words. It was pretty impressive. Our Archimedian got canceled because there was no power in many different places. We had the Economic Development Council Meeting, met with the Mason County Housing Authority. The GORSS Coalition also had a meeting, and I met with many different of our local businesses. There's a lot of confusion out there right now on who can be open and who should be open. And I want to let everybody know, feel free to contact us. There's actually, aside from all the things you're hearing, there's, there are drawings that actually make it very plain and simple. What is allowed, what is not allowed, what it looks like to have a building that has what's necessary to be able to open at the twenty-five percent capacity. So please, remember, regardless of who tells you what, nobody's going to pay your fine for you. If LNI comes out, I'd love to see you open, without a doubt, but at the same time, just know if if you're taking somebody's advice, you better look at it yourself because the county, the chambers, nobody's going to pay your fine. It's all going to be on your shoulders if LNI comes out, so please keep that in mind. Afterwards, we have a Mason Transit Authority Meeting, North Mason Chamber Commerce Board of Directors Meeting, Audit Committee Meeting for the County RIAF fifteen briefing, meeting with the folks at Collins Lake, as you mentioned. We, the next week, we have Board of Health, and we have other meetings that are coming up there. With that being said, that brings us back, and we do it all over again.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I just want to make a comment, if you don't mind, regarding something you just said that really kind of struck me regarding some of the businesses and, you know, who's opening and who's listening to who and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, I just want to make a point. I know that there's a lot of, there are a lot of businesses out of county that have opened, you know, essentially in defiance of some of the mandates and reopening plans. And I know a lot of folks are anxious to try to support them in those efforts. But also just be mindful of the businesses in our county that are trying to navigate these challenges and do what they think is best to make sure that they have a business to reopen down the road, that they have an opportunity to employ people in our county and help provide for needs of people here and their families and all, again, understand why people would want to make the political statement of going and supporting some of these out-of-county establishments who are doing this. But don't forget the local ones, too, who are trying to keep their heads above water. And so just be mindful of that, and sometimes the biggest political statement you can make is supporting your own community so that it remains intact as we reopen here, hopefully sooner rather than later. But appreciate your comments on that, Commissioner.
Yeah, I would agree. One thing I did forget, I'd like to give a thank you to Commissioner Trask as we transferred over the leadership on, for chairmanship of this. We asked Commissioner Trask, because she had done such an exemplary job of representing us through this COVID on our area command and our other entities, work with the nonprofits and the schools, so we have a great line of continuity through this. I want to thank Commissioner Trask for standing up and continuing to take on that leadership role and and stay at the point on those organizations for us. Just, I also Just, I also want to let the community know that helps to ensure that that continuity keeps everybody protected and, and that we do the very best we can as a commission. So thank you, Commissioner Trask. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move, we adjourn.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for German. Any conversations?
Oh, you're muted.
Hearing, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.